I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, eligible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, you don't think we can approve them in a check because not everybody has seen them?
No.
So whoever has them, you can pass them on them. Um, on the action items, um, I had a question for Karen on the coronavirus grant. What are the $111,000 expenses? Like, I didn't see that. I just saw the contract with the grant.
Right, so unfortunately, the $111,000 for Barnstead is if you have eligible costs. That's the limit of the amount of money that we could get back. So the costs that we have so far for the grant total about $3,000. That's what's been submitted to you. But if more comes in with this grant, we can submit every month.
So have you gone to every department to see, like, where's that $3,000? Like, the fire department, I'm sure, has to buy extra masks and equipment. And Wayne Santos probably has had to buy things like, you know, signs for the beach, going, you know. Uh, so where, where is that $3,000? What other departments have been discussing?
We've reached out to every department. Um, Wayne Santos was in last week. Everything that he has, he's had donated. Um, most with police department as well, some of the expenses. We've asked them to capture it. Um, there will be more expenses because for fire department, um, I think as the fire chief reported to you at a meeting, they're looking at getting, um, some specialized equipment for the ambulance um, that sanitizes and provides, you know, protection. So, um, but that is not included in this $3,000. If you wanted a complete breakdown of what is included, we, I could go and grab Lisa because she's our grant person. She's been getting all the information.
I was just kind of curious as to where you were getting the expenses from because I'm sure there are, like, expenses, like, for instance, when you had Wayne go get the signs made for the beach before we opened the beach. Like, that could be an expense. Like, things like that can be expenses.
Yeah, we've asked him to provide everything, every expense that he has. Um, so we've reached out to every department and asked them.
When does it expire?
Um, like I said, it will go every month. They just asked that you, they wanted it submitted, um, what we had so far, um, by the end of this week and then every month going forward if we have new expenses. And there is no end date currently on that particular grant.
The election, I'll call them. Are they planning on moving forth plans for the elections as far as, um, you know, safety protocols, plastic glasses or anything, especially for the town hall before we reopen? Is there anything that is expected to be purchased that we can put against that?
Yes, there will be because we're not open yet. The town clerk, tax collector is also, um, looking at, she will give us invoices for, we'll have to have a bunch of absentee ballots. So there'll be added costs there. Um, there may be more people needed at the elections. So anything that, um, can be related at all, um, it will be coming forth. There's just nothing right now in what's being submitted that we have invoices for, so.
Okay, so I just wanted an explanation of how that I'm standing. Okay, so I didn't sign that yet because I wasn't sure when I was signing.
Yeah, that's fine.
I just wanted to find out, at least I don't think I did, I may have. Um, okay. So I asked you a question on the inventory form. And I wanted to find out, is there, uh, do you have a copy of that inventory form? If we did decide to use it, what would it look like?
I don't, didn't have one for you tonight, but I can certainly get one for you. And you can look at it. If anybody else has any questions about the inventory form, it's a state form. Um, they ask municipalities every year, will you be using and sending out to your residents an inventory form? So the inventory form basically asks if they're property owners, how many people live in the house, some basic questions. Uh, the reason we don't do it, it's not required. Um, the state just asks that each town reply whether you are going to send them out or, or you're not. Um, we have not done it in several years only because, first of all, the cost is not in the budget. Um, you'd have to send, the RSA requires if you do the form, you have to send it to every person on the, on our mailing list, every resident in town, um, or wherever their address is. Um, and they have so many days to return the form. If they don't, we have to send certified mails out. If they still don't respond to us, then it's our obligation as a town to then proceed with whatever steps necessary to make them respond. So because of all the costs involved with the stamps, the letters, the mailing, the time, um, and then who would take them to go it? Um, who would enforce this? So that's why the town has not chosen to do it. It's costly.
I just think in the future, if we could, like, get, so we know what we're signing because we don't really know, I don't know what we're signing in not really two years. So, you know, just attach something so we can be more informed as to what we're signing. So if you could get us a copy of that for the next meeting, that would be great just because we should know what we're signing.
That's correct. And if you look at the form, you don't say you don't have to sign it tonight. I think there's, um, they just ask it to be returned by a certain date. And I'm sure, um, we haven't reached that date yet. So I'll have the form for you at the next meeting.
But in the future, if you know anything that you need us to sign out, you've never seen before, maybe you could just attach so we're more educated on what we're signing.
Yeah, I thought my explanation of what it is, of what it is, yes, would be appropriate. But I will get the form for you next week.
Yeah, and I think looking at the form really, it would be nice to know what we're talking about.
Okay.
Let's see. So, anybody else have any questions about the action items? Maybe I will, let's see. Well, I could tie it to the arrow and the two letters higher for the new, um, police officers. And I think I helped you with the rest of the stuff. And the vacation slip was for Karen, which I think she already took.
Yes, it was last Friday, yes.
So I think we did our, did everyone, so on the new business, we have the Walcott letter and the annual test highway diesel tank. Uh, that looked good. Uh, that looked like they didn't find any issues with that. And the Walcott letter, um, I don't know why I didn't print that up.
It, would you like it?
So, um, so I had, I don't know if everyone's ready to discuss the Walcott thing. Um, but I did have a couple of questions.
What is coming at 5:30?
Yes, the road agent is coming at 5:30, yes.
It, it isn't about that. So, oh, um, it's more, do you want to wait with him regarding this lawyer thing? So I had some questions about that. I had some comments about that.
Sure, and, and the attorney's emails, they're confidential.
Is this confidential?
Well, his email, I believe, would be confidential if you're, he's providing.
It's just legal.
Legal information. I mean, if you won't, I guess it's up to you if you want to discuss what, what his.
Well, I do want to discuss, um, the video.
Sure, yep.
That was in public.
Yes, absolutely, yep.
Um, so I did review the video. And, um, I just have still some concerns about the video uh, because when I was on the video, first of all, when it talks about Dwayne making his motion, it says that Dwayne makes a motion, um, a motion to allow Andy to spend up to $570 on his proposal for paving. It didn't specifically say Walcott.
Right.
It, it didn't say that. I know there was a discussion that Andy says, well, I want Walcott RFP. And Dwayne says, well, what do you want, Andy? And Andy says, well, I want, uh, well, I want to approve the RFP for Walcott.
Right.
So that was the only thing that went, you know, that was mentioned about an RFP from Walcott. And then, um, we were reviewing the paperwork Andy gave us. And I know that, um, it had the paving scheduled for 2019, 2000 to 2022. Um, and I knew I was reviewing that. And then as far as, um, this RFP thing, I'm looking at it and I see that, you know, I make a, I make a, I make a comment about we should change Andy's name to George. And then I say, and what about Green Hill Road? I don't understand. Shouldn't that be White Oak Road? And Andy turns around and says, well, you don't have to worry about that because that's just a pricing sheet. And I said, well, I know, but if we're putting our name to something, we should, um, make sure it's accurate. So I seriously look at this. And since we were talking about paving contracts and not about Walcott, and as you're heading on this, this looks like it's just Andy's paving bid. You know, I don't, I really don't feel, feel like this was awarding a contract because of some of the things that were said in that meeting. It seemed to me that we were just reviewing a bid and that we weren't going to go any more than $570,000. And when he said it was a pricing sheet, was he, you know, I. Did he say that on the video? Yeah, he did, right after I said White Oak Road. He said, don't worry about that, that's just pricing sheet. And then I'm sitting there wondering to myself, why wasn't this updated as in a contract? Why didn't, after he, he gave us a bid, why didn't he return to us an official contract for us to sign? I thought this was just a bid. You know, I, why was this not an official contract? You don't, you don't do an official contract with people, you know, making fixes on it. He's also, don't do an official contract if it's stated clearly that it's a pricing sheet.
Well, he submitted, he had a handout of a pricing sheet. Maybe he was referring, thinking you were referring to that.
I was saying, this says Green, if you listen to the video, it says, I say, this says Green Hill Road on here and that's not accurate. I believe it's White Oak Road.
Right.
And Andy goes, yeah, but you don't have to worry about that because that's a pricing sheet. That's what he says. So I'm just wondering, there's so many, so many scenarios here that don't make sense about this whole thing.
Let, let's talk about the, uh, the meeting minute, the minutes from the meeting prior to that meeting, which was February 18.
18.
When they were asking for bids, Andy Sylvester clearly stated he only had one bid at that particular time.
Exactly.
Okay, now you're in a meeting on the 10th of March. Andy didn't bring any more bids with him. He didn't bring any more estimates. He didn't bring any more pricing.
No, and we still had time.
So why not?
Well, if you read the first line of the March 10th minutes, it states that he only had that one bid in.
And he said it here in the minutes too, on the 18th. The whole month later, he, he still had no bid, uh, no more bids, no more pricing.
And he claimed that some.
It's clearly states he didn't look for.
He didn't, well, he claims that Pike was too busy. And he states that, um, somebody, he went to somebody in Franklin and there was an issue there too. And so I'm sorry, but I know we could go out and get bids and there should be. And my, my feeling was that we had plenty of time at that point to go out and get bids. We could have gotten bids, so.
The other part I want to say.
And why, why would we, why would we do, do all this? I thought we, we, we really needed to make sure that we stuck to our budget because that was going to town meeting. I, I thought that's what we were making sure that we were voting on is the budget amount.
This is the basics on this whole thing. But totally 18th, he, by, to Dwayne, he needed to get his proposals in within the next couple of weeks. And he did. Two weeks later on the 10th, he brought that proposal in. Said that was the only proposal he had. It was the only one he could get. He mentioned something about Pike. I don't know about the rest of you, but I know damn well this town wasn't going to accept Pike. They don't like their work and this and that, and they weren't going to. And didn't, even if they did have a proposal from him, he said he couldn't get any others. That's the only one he had up for that day. He had all kinds of time. I don't know when it was originally mentioned he could go out and get his bids. But with all that kind of time, there have been other contractors that have gotten in touch with George, asking George, how come they never get a chance to bid in this town? And then George went out in a week with our direction and got four bids in a week. He got one bid, he only had one bid. And they accepted that bid or so they thought. And so they're telling us that that was the only bid. And he went to work for them a week later. Why this was done on the 10th on election night, there's a lot going on. Why it was pushed through so early? Apparently from what I'm told, this usually doesn't wait until like May or sometime like that. And this, this had to go through that night. And the most important part of the whole thing was it happened on the 10th. The new road agent was taking, taking over on the 14th, four days later, if I'm correct. And I think I am. He was taking over four days later. Why is this all in Andy's lap? He's telling us, he's telling you, boy, he was not coming back. He was finished. And, uh, and he's making all these decisions when we have a new road agent who has exclusive experience in this field. And everything was done in rush that night. We told everything was so busy with election night, it was all pushed through and so-called this and that. I, I, it was all done and go like the way it was done. This was almost a $600,000 contract or proposal, however it calls. Nobody asked to see the contract. Nobody, there's no opt-out clause. You clearly never looked at it. How can anybody in good faith, thinking of the town, even put their name to this without saying, isn't there something the attorney should look at and authorize and tell us that it's okay before we spend this kind of money? And, 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 no matter how this ends up, there needs to be a new bidding proposal in this town the way it's done. Things need like this with that kind of money, the taxpayers' money, need to go in front of the attorney. That's what he's paid for is to look these things over and okay. My other question with this whole thing is, I want to know why George's name was put to that by you that night? He was not the road agent that night. So why would, you changed, you altered a legal document if that's a legal document?
But I didn't, I don't, I thought it was a bid. I didn't think it was. I thought it was a bid statement.
Also, whatever it is, his name shouldn't have been attached to it. He was not, uh, he was not the road agent that night.
But these were my notes. I had no idea it was going to go out to be a legal document. And the other thing is, this says 21820. And on 21820, Andy was told to go out and get bids and bring it back two weeks later. And this was already signed on the 18th. That to me is a big red flag right there. So I, how do I even know this is what we signed?
We tried to, we tried to borrow $600,000 and there are a lot, a lot of unanswered questions and it sticks.
So I wanted to just, you listened to the video. I haven't had a chance to look at it. And did Andy Sylvester say they tried to get more bids for paving and only have one bid right now? Did he state that verbatim?
No.
He, he said.
Not in the video.
He said, in the video, he said he, um, didn't get a proposal from Pike. They wouldn't bid. He asked someone.
No, he said that Pike was too busy.
And then he asked someone else.
Then he said, then he said, somebody from, he says, and then I talked to, I forget which contract, Franklin and blah, 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 I could barely hear.
The guy was out on vacation two weeks.
Yeah, he was on vacation. And he says, all I really want is you to approve my RFP from Walcott.
But he did say the only bid, because.
No, he said, all I really want from you is to approve my RFP from Walcott. And then the discussion, then the discussion went into, um, listing the roads and talking about, which was another interesting fact, that he said that he went out and measured the roads himself. And then he went out, then he said he went out with Walcott and measured the roads himself. He says, and we were spot on. And then when we get the information, the numbers were completely different. So that's another, another red flag.
But he did, he did say, Andy did, Rick Dwayne did ask, and you guys listened to the video, um, is this the only, is Walcott the only bid you have? And Andy said yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So yes, Diane, so that answers your question.
He did say.
But he also said on the 18th.
He did say that.
He said it on the 18th. He did, so between the 18th and the 10th, he couldn't get one more bid? He couldn't get two more bids? He couldn't get any more bids?
I think he just, the thing was is, I mean, at, at that point, I think he just wanted Walcott to get the bid.
Well, plus he's working for.
And I, and, and, and what, what I was trying to look for was that after we had done that, he was saying all that stuff. I, I don't, I don't remember ever giving him the Walcott. And I didn't even know he was going to work for Walcott myself, personally. So then afterwards, I felt like I was slighted because I didn't even, I didn't even know about this.
So.
They seem to get pushed through so soon. It just doesn't make sense.
I don't know how, I don't know how they even consider that a legal document. But either way, I mean, the new road agent does not want to do the original plan that we, that that was forwarded on. We're going to do, right?
Right, we're going to change it.
He doesn't want to do it because he knows that it's a waste of money. It's a waste of time, effort, and it's just going to end up putting us back right in the back in the same situation we are right now.
Right. Because you have to ask yourself, do you want to do roads the way they've been done? Or are they going to crack into it three years? So if you want to do it correctly, which means because of this, we're going to have to probably do less miles if you want it done correctly. I don't know, but I will contend, and I don't care what the video says. I don't care if I said I haven't read it yet, which I probably hadn't because we were so rushed. But bottom line is, I was not signing a contract in my eyes. I've signed a million contracts and they've been actual contracts. In my mind, I was signing a proposal. And it was a number that we were voting on for the budget. It was not for Walcott. Again, I will state until my dying day, if Andy wanted Walcott to get that contract, why didn't Rick Dwayne make that motion for Walcott?
And again, you're looking directly at me.
No, 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 no.
I, I want you to look at the camera because I'm providing, I'm providing information to you to make the best decisions. That's all.
And I can actually see you because I'm talking right now.
It, it would, it seems to have been pushed through. It seemed that it was too soon. It seemed like there was not, obviously not enough effort put into this to get multiple bids. If and when, if those other bids are open, which I don't see how they can't be because of the reclaiming that are in there. And I found out that all these other bids are much lower than what Walcott gave us. We're going to know that the taxpayers' money was, if this ends up in Walcott's hands, was spent and a lot of money was spent that didn't have to be, if this was done directly. It's that simple.
Chairman, may I speak?
Yes.
Have you all read the letter from Mark Puffer to town?
I do, but I don't feel that that letter is valid because you asked.
I'm speaking.
Yes, you asked a question.
No, it's not a question. I'm speaking.
He's saying.
If you read the letter, you will find that you are between a rock and a hard place. You can spend, you can say, okay, give the, give the contract to Walcott for the proposed price or you can go to litigation.
I don't agree with that because I think Mark Puffer.
Are you a lawyer?
I believe that Mark Puffer, he made a decision based on what Karen told him. He needs to watch the video and let him make that decision after he reads the video. I know Karen was as accurate as she could, but I still think that he was making it based on Karen's, um, information. And I think he should watch the video.
Well, I'm going to tell you one more thing, and I want you to listen to it closely.
And I was going to say that earlier.
If this goes to court.
But I was told that we weren't going to speak the legal.
If this goes to court, Rick Dwayne and I will testify that this is a valid contract and we signed it in good faith and good luck, County Barnstead.
That's nice, Ed. That's nice. Way to spend the people's money. You did a great job, huh? You got a heck of a deal on that one, didn't you, bud?
Oh, yeah.
You didn't even go out and get another pricing. You felt so good about it.
And you know what?
You know what? That's crap. It's crap.
If, if you brought us something out with five, four bids.
$600,000.
I would still vote to give the decision out.
I don't care how much you cost.
I think we're going to stop right now and just, let's just, you already mentioned the, the lawyers thing. And my opinion on the lawyers thing is that we gave him all the information he needed to make a decision. And he gave us a good decision. If he wants to change his opinion based on what Karen said, based on the video, he needs to watch the video before he gives an opinion. That is the best way for this to be handled. I have not taken his opinion without him watching that video. It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. And he has to have firsthand evidence of what we're talking about before he gives an opinion. I'm sorry, that's just the way I feel. And I, and I feel that we gave him all the information and everything that was on that video wasn't exactly what we, what we said.
There was absolutely no reason to avoid Walcott, any kind of contract, without some pricing. There was absolutely no reason to, for anybody, at any time, whether you like them, you're gossip, you're from her, you're getting a check, it don't matter. There's absolutely no reason for it.
Yes, there is.
No, there isn't, Ed.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Walcott has worked here in town many times before. The quality of their work is far superior to any that we've ever had done by other people.
So he spent $600,000, got half a road done because they do such great work.
So he spent $600,000, got half a road done, because they do such great work, instead of five roads, is that what you're saying? Is that what you're saying? That is what you're saying!
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna contribute to your-
Yeah, I don't blame you. I wouldn't either, about you.
So, I'm moving forward, so that this is, never happens again, obviously. I mean, I signed it, and I'm sorry, I'll disagree with you to the day I die. I did not sign anything in good faith, because I didn't even know it's a contract. So that aside, moving forward, we have to make sure this doesn't happen again. Like Karen said, we have to put a, uh, you know, formal proposal when we go out to bid for roads, for sure. Because I would, never in my life have I signed anything that just says a proposal on it. It should say contract. There's a huge difference between the two, they're not interchangeable words.
Creepy, when I went out and got a gas tank last week, he had to get three quotes for a gas tank, $1,200 gas tank. And what just go, this is worth $600,000, and I'm gonna buy this?
This was not a contract, this was a proposal, that was all we were signing. It was not a contract. And I, I'm sorry, but I agree with Diane, I know that I wouldn't have done that, so-
The motion would have been to award it to Walcott. That is what I cannot get by. That's what the motion would have been.
The motion should have been, motion to award Walcott.
Exactly.
So I have to, two to five dollars for every guy's, you know, for paving. And now there's not one that's not.
No.
So Walcott ended up sending us, um, I think he sent updated pricing, Karen?
Yes.
Do you have that? So I think we should just put that with, um, the comp, the bids, since he didn't wanna give us an official sealed bid. That would be his bid, because he gave us an updated-
Right.
Bid, the proposal for bids. So he can, that can be included in our bids that we opened tonight.
Okay.
And that will be considered his bid, even though he chose not to put in the sealed bid.
And so what I've done, and everybody can look at this, he, Walcott just sent a letter letting you know, as he had discussed, the DOT AC price has gone down, which changes, um, the price per ton. So I took his figures, of what his new figures would be, and, uh, so I did another spreadsheet on what he had bid before, so you can just see what the prices are, okay? Alright, yep.
But there was too much discrepancy on the, on the square footage of the roads.
No, they updated, right? Did they update it?
I think everybody bid on, was it 8100 ton, that's what, whatever the road agent had, everyone bid on. And I don't know, because I didn't see that proposal, so I, I don't know what-
What about, as far as we decided on reclaiming homes?
Right, we figured if we could save 64, 68,000, whatever it was on there. Then we would reclaim homes, leave for the winter, reclaim.
Right.
That would save 68,000 dollars. And then, if we did reclaim it, then all the prices should be, is for base, winter base.
Right.
And then put, you know, the finish on there.
But, did they all, I know you told me that the, the new bids, they had, they understand that homes wasn't getting done, we're just reclaiming. And Walcott's aware of that also, correct?
Walcott should be aware of it.
We talked about it right there, I'm just wondering if they, because 8100 would change. 8100 was originally with Walcott's proposal.
Right, so with the, all I did, because I did not wanna alter their proposal, I just, um, took their new prices and put it on every road, whether it was shim overlay or reclaim. And so all you would do, if the other people didn't bid on that, then you'd just remove that. So I think you'll be able to at least have the same-
What I asked all the bidders to do was give me a price on shim overlay, and also a price on just base.
Okay.
So if we're reclaiming, we're gonna have a base price and a shim overlay price. That is how I told them.
And a, and a few of them have reclaimed prices as well, right?
I had all, give me prices for a recliner owner. And I would do the finish work, the rolling and watering, and rope, to get it ready.
And are those in the bids as well?
Those should be in the bids. I asked them all to include that.
Okay, we're in another situation here, where we're gonna open these, and Walcott bid, right, the lowest one? And very well, like, okay, and that's, said, done, done here, right there. And if it's no item, whether we like it or don't, we obviously don't like the way this was done. This was in the back of a horse pile, if you ask me, this is not right. But, we're gonna make changes so that this doesn't happen again, long as I'm here anyways. Uh, then it's not done correctly, but then, before any decisions are made, or anything, we need to, I think, this time, talk to the attorney, go over what's going to be done, and what can be done, and what the consequences are going forward, because if this, if we're held to Walcott, and the others are all lower, we're gonna be in for a big loss there, as it is. And then, if anything goes to court, whether we can all sit here and think we're correct, or we can be told we're correct, anything can happen to court, and we could take another loss there. Just like that $600,000, this is not our money, it's the taxpayer's money. So we gotta be damn sure, the direction we take, if we're going to lose somewhere tonight, is gonna cost us, and the taxpayers, at least.
That's my thought. And, and, and the only thing I said, the only thing I'm sticking to is, is that, if the lawyer is gonna give a second opinion based on something that Karen referenced to him, he should at least see the video, before he makes that opinion. Because although I trust Karen, there's nothing to do with that. He needs to see the video himself.
He needs to collect all the information.
Yes.
Cause I guess I would question, why would Andy come forth thinking that he was going to be having a contract signed, when what Rick Dwayne clearly said on the 18th was that, to bring a proposal so they can pass it on to the road agent? There's never anything indicative that we're supposed to be signing in a contract.
For a proposal, or anything?
Exactly, that's, that's pretty clear right there, that, that was not the intention of this board, to have him come and bring a proposal to have it signed, I think. So that's-
That's what it says in the minutes.
I'm not arguing that.
One of those I sit, I don't even attempt, I'm spending $600,000 and handing me one bid. Cause I'll go out and walk backwards to get at least a second one, that's ridiculous.
Especially if you don't work here tomorrow.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess the whole thing that bothers me is, I don't understand why you couldn't get more bids in a month of March. Because all these companies are hungry.
Yep.
At that time of year, get their work ready, and schedule it.
Well, you don't get it, if you don't get it, you don't want to. You don't get it if you don't want to.
Exactly. But, you know, it doesn't take nothing. All you gotta do, well, first of all, it should have been in the newspaper.
It should have been public notice, absolutely.
It wasn't. I totally get that. But no other bidders, and I called all these companies, before I went to them, did you get a bid proposal? No. Everyone had the same answer, no. So you can't, I just saw it, I just can't understand why.
And you even had a company, that does an interview where a lot of it questioned you, on how come they couldn't get a bid through this town, correct?
So I did what was asked of me, I went out and I got bids. And I spent a lot of time going over the bids with these guys, and I mean, I'm talking hours, and some of it was my own time on Fridays.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not complaining, I'm just doing what I-
We're looking at what's best interest.
Okay. I mean, we all said, we all paid taxes.
I think we should just-
We're not a bid.
Right here, they're all sealed, except, of course, Walcott's is-
Well, there was a question about opening or not, and the attorney said, gave advice, but, we don't have any choice, because the reclaimers are there.
It's entirely up to you.
So, are we all in agreement that we should open up the bids?
No.
I say yes, Diane.
Why not it?
Well, in one, one breath, in one breath, Laurie wants more information to be given to the attorney. Fine, I can agree with that. But if you open the bids, you're indicating that.
Well, the bids are for reclaiming, which is totally different.
Read what he said.
How can you pay when I, when I ripped this stuff up, I said?
Read what he said. You see, you're arguing two different points. You're arguing the bid process, which arguably, maybe should change, okay? But on the other hand, you're arguing whether the, the signed form that we gave to Walcott is legitimate. So, you've gotta separate the two. Okay? And I think, my opinion is, the issue is whether this signed contract is valid and legal. You can, you can badmouth Andy all you want, you can badmouth the process we went through, but we were a legally elected board. We now have a video of you two ladies signing it, whether you remember it or not, whether you agree with what you signed, it doesn't matter, he's got a video of it.
We signed something, but we don't, we know that we didn't sign a contract, we signed a, a, a proposal.
Laurie, you signed what we had in front of us. You signed what we had in front of you.
I'm questioning what we signed. This says 2/18.
Then you need to cut, then you need to talk to Mark Puffer. And, and, and until we do that, until he sees the video, I suggest that we just sit on these bids. If it's a week, so what?
Well, I'd like to hear what everybody else in the board thinks.
Diane, I think I'm going to agree with Ed on this, that we wait until the attorney sees it. And again, going on the basis of spending taxpayer dollars, I think waiting seven days could be the difference between whether we have to spend or not.
Okay, um, Diane?
I agree, because we're basing this on the fact that they couldn't wait four days for a new road agent, committing a disrespect to them on this, or advice, and if they do it, I don't see why we can't wait seven. To, not, we're not going to do this, at all. We, I think we're pretty much agreeing with that, almost all of us, but, I don't think seven days is gonna hurt us to get another, a professional opinion, once again, with the bidding.
I think we are separating it already. We're, we're separating it by, we're not gonna make a decision, we're not saying Walcott doesn't have a contract right now. We're not saying any of that.
No.
And, by us looking at the bids, now we have a pretty good idea how we're gonna do the reclaim. And how much the reclaim is gonna cost us. Maybe we can add more roads to the, to the paving, you know? Maybe we can, or, or maybe we have to cut some out. We don't know yet, we don't even know what the scope of the project is yet.
Exactly.
Until, until we see it. And we're going off the scope from a previous road agent that doesn't exist anymore. And it, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna take care of what we need to do. So, we're not, we're not making a decision, we're not telling Walcott he doesn't have a contract. We're not saying any of that.
We're not doing that, we're just, we just wanna open up bids and try to figure out what we're gonna do.
We're in a plan. But even if Walcott does, even if we do go to Walcott, right now, we still need those open, we still need that pricing, and we still need to come up with a, a plan.
As soon as possible, cause we're getting late this season.
I can teach you that one more time. On the reclaim, George, those roads are bad, Peachum, Shackleton Corner, those roads are horrible. No matter what happens this year with the paving, and we already know, we, we kind of, we're gonna go with the reclaiming homes. Those roads better off reclaiming this year for winter until next year, if the taxpayers weren't gonna get paid. I think better off being reclaimed.
Well, there'll be a hollow also.
That's what I mean, you guys gotta deal with, those roads are horrible.
I'd like my brother to see the paving, at least, when he goes.
I'm just looking at it, whereas what Rick said, we wanna see reclaiming is, that's the key right now. And I'm just wondering, if no matter what, we're gonna go through with reclaiming.
The thing is, I need, once we reclaim those, I need at least a week and a half to do my finish grading, get everything ready, so they can be right behind me on that last day, when I'm finished grading that road they're gonna do. They're gonna be right behind me as I'm touching it up with that paper and that line of trucks. I'm looking at it.
You mean to pay it?
To pay it.
Well, I was looking at the fact that we reclaim them anyway, no matter how long this could get held up or what, the paving about, if we ended up going with the reclaiming, reclaiming those roads, they're gonna be better off for winter, I think.
Yeah. I mean, it can still plow up, you can still take it up. I can at least grade them if I need to, keep them smooth, to what?
That's what I mean, they're not in very good shape now.
Okay, so, so, so I feel that Andy vacuums that. We'll, we'll set up another appointment, we'll speak with the attorney. We'll open up the bids, based upon his recommendations.
No, because I just think he needs to see it, and, and, it may not clear that we signed the contract that night.
Well, it may, it may or may not be, but the, the real big picture is, is there's a whole new plan for the road structure.
Right.
And, and what, what we're gonna do to them. We're not going off that last one. We're not doing shim overlay on everything like everybody wants to do, we're not doing that.
We're not paving at all, we're not shimming overlaying and wasting the taxpayers' money.
And the other thing is-
We're gonna do it right.
Walcott's work don't lose any business, even if we didn't go with him, because he's, this time's where he's just out there.
Yeah, we're on a good point. Scheduling is over, they totally locked in with us, but-
Well, they were supposed to do it according to some notes, or something, or what he said, in June. They'll be ready to go by June, is what it said in the video.
We'll see what the attorney says.
The last thing I wanna say is, read the last paragraph of Mark Puffer's letter to us. That is under the town's options. Second, the other basic option is to disavow the alleged Walcott contract and open up the other bids. In such case, Walcott's bid should be considered along with the others. Although, this approach would be fundamentally unfair to Walcott, because its bid is a matter of public record. And you know, if they think they've been wrong, they're going to sue us.
But he refused to bid on it.
If his bid is a matter of public record, and you go back through the minutes, that name's not mentioned, that is it. That contract was nowhere, now was it? Walcott had to provide us with the contract, why didn't this town have a copy of that contract, if it was a legitimate contract? When the town has copies of every other contract that's out there, why did this town not have a copy of that contract? And nowhere was Walcott's information made out to the public. So that can't be true. That's a false statement.
Well, Ed's not making a false statement, it's just, no, no, about situation, the comfort.
Well, it's, yeah, and he's describing standard language.
No, he's talking about the minutes of March 10, when they said exactly, Andy said what Walcott's bid was.
Yeah, I said ten minutes? What I, what I meant by this was-
I believe it's in the minutes.
It could be consequences by us opening these, but we have to, because, and what, we plan on reclaiming. And the reclaim bids are in there, so we have to do it, so, our hands are tied there anyways, because I believe we're gonna reclaim anyways. So, and we're gonna have to pretty soon, since it is anyway, so, our hands are tied with that contract. It's not our fault they don't reclaim, so. And then we take it from there, with the paving, but we could get one up with this for a while, we don't know. We may not, and we may, but no matter what, we at least get our reclaiming done with that far ahead. And then you're gonna do touch-up down the road, you can do touch-up.
No problem.
Right. So, alright, so what are we gonna do?
We're going to have the attorney review the video, and then we're going to read this at the next meeting, correct?
Not just read, not just read the video.
Right.
I want him to have, and we bid of information he could possibly need.
I think he has everything except the new pricing that Walcott sent, and the video.
Does he have the minutes from the 18th?
He's had all that, when he came that evening and met with you, he had all, yes, I believe you sent him everything, yes.
I sent him the minutes of the 18th, and I sent him the minutes of March 10.
Yes, yep.
Um, the only thing he, and I sent him this.
Yes, yep.
The other thing that's interesting about it, is White Oak Road was on there, when was White Oak Road done?
Last year, because we're gonna top it for you.
Right, the topping was supposed to be this year.
Could be doing it this year.
No.
No, it hasn't been.
Remember, we talked about when it was doing 28-year home, and not that long high, you're not gonna put finish down, you have to hold it up.
Right.
That's where I was getting confused about White Oak. Um, okay.
So as far as the water they bid on the paving, we're gonna hold off for a week, I think, is that, are we doing a motion on that?
You should make a motion.
We'll make a motion, we table Walcott until the 21st.
Is there, and, I'm sorry, Diane?
Just, all the bids, yep.
Yeah, that's, reclaim- Yeah, that's, reclaim it, right? The paving part.
Diane, can you state that again, please?
I said, I made a motion that we table. I don't think we can separate the two though.
No, they're all in a sealed bid, so the minute you open it.
Yeah, so I made, I made the motion that we table, and you can, it's okay for one week for.
I can wait one more week.
Okay.
I, I will ask, ask that you not give a timer, because if you have to get with Mark Puffer, and he says, "I can't see you for X number of days," you don't wanna cut yourself off at seven days, one week.
Well, I mean, bottom line is that we're in a timeline here, so.
Until, until six time is Mark Puffer or our town's attorney can comment?
No, I think he can review it this week. So I'm gonna make a motion, we table it for one week.
You're gonna, even if you can't, you can tell the other bids on reclaiming, just for reclaiming.
I can see if they'll just give you the bids on reclaiming. I mean, they've already written, they've already put them in this bid anyway, so.
And I think it's a week.
It's a week for the reclaim.
It's a week.
I don't know if that's as long.
Well, I think they'd give us better pricing if they get the paving too, though.
That was, well, I don't know.
No, I asked for a separate bid on the reclaim.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
But they're, but it's all included in the sealed bids, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
They're all in the bid, they're gonna see everything.
Yeah.
So if this thing gets dragged out, we can still, you can still ask just for reclaimer bids.
Right, I can always do that.
By that.
Yes.
And then if the lawyer, scheduling doesn't work.
Now, do we have, do we, do you think we, he would get together with us or come up with something within the week? Can?
I'm going, if I have to drive the, actually, yeah, 'cause I can't send, I was thinking I could send the file, but it's too big, I can't send it to a server. But I'll drive it, drive, or if someone else wants to drive over to Concord tomorrow and drop off the flash drive.
I have to go to Concord tomorrow, if you want, I can talk to them. Do you want me to see if, if he can schedule, do you want me to call him, see if I can drop that off and?
I can probably, that's the file, too.
I can drop it right off to him, it's only a cover.
Like, he, he needs to hear from the girls, too, and, and know that, what Ed's feelings are. As far as being a contractor, and hear what the girls think about what they've done. Hey, I know he's got a general idea, but I think he needs to hear that after, after or with seeing the video, too. I don't know.
So what, so what do we do this? I'll call him and tell him I'll drop it off in the morning, because I'm going right through Concord. I'll drop off at his office, and I'll ask him if he can come in need with us at what time? Five. Karen, where's the schedule like the next week?
Um, actually, I don't have it in front of me. You do have some appointments next week. You wanted to, um, talk to the board next week.
Alright, I, I, so, we were supposed to meet next week anyways.
Yes, but.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
We're just, we're on the way.
Right, next week is a regular meeting, you wanted to meet because of the bids.
Alright, so can we meet with him at five?
You could meet.
And have all appointments at, if we have anything except for myself coming? If it, only if it's critical, can we put it on the agenda?
Yes, and you can also meet before five. I don't have to post it. Any meeting with an attorney is a non-meeting, so it doesn't have to be posted. So if you guys could, if you wanna get here at four and take care of this before the regular business, you could do that as well.
Make it at four?
Diane, might, you think you could?
I'll be close.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody can make it at four, okay.
So ask him before.
Alright.
Okay, perfect.
Because I know, so we need to send the motion or review or anything?
No, the motion's to table it, so.
Right.
Okay. Does that just get to, we want to take a vote?
And we need a second on that motion.
Is there a second?
Right, second.
Okay.
All those who favor them?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstained? I should carry first. Um.
Okay.
So, George, do you have anything else for us?
How'd that gas tank go?
One truck and running.
One truck and running?
Yes, I had that thing back to gunning out.
Oh yeah?
Yeah. I was waiting to be in fixing washout.
I was just gonna say, how was the washout this week?
They're not bad, no.
Did you get a peaching? So that was pretty, uh.
Yeah, I only added a little material, but I also reached out to the grader and fixed the shoulders and the washouts. Get the same old more plastered road. Jump all the time, fix the washouts.
Get the chance we can throw some, um, something on the bridge on the patio?
I know, I mean, if you have to, I'm trying to, today I didn't do a grade because of the weather. The latte and material, I'm gonna travel down to over to the field.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
So today I serviced the grader, and, because it was over on the service. And we finally now have, Chris is working on entering everything into the computer on services, nothing's been put in at all. So now we're gonna be going in, because they've always written it in a book. So, he's working on getting that done. So now we can just go in and say, okay, truck 221 was serviced last, and we'll get it up. Here's the mileage, okay, there you go. Other than that, I mean, we're still ditching. I just got 10 roads we're able to hold in today that we're gonna need, because I need to put gravel on the new road. Now, that's first, is to build that up, because your bus comes back, there's a quarter of a road. It's coming back, too. So. So we're gonna be grabbing now through the, after another couple of weeks, once they get it digged. So we're gonna grab it right now through the, take care of that.
You going all the way to the town line, or you stopping at, at the Four Corners?
Probably at the Four Corners, for now. Because I still gotta find my stone, which comes out of my gravel, like, a little window. So I'm gonna look out for that, and then, once I do that, see what I got left, and then we'll buy more gravel and finish whatever else we gotta do.
How about your culverts, George, have you ordered those?
I ordered culverts, right now, it's hard getting anything. Because the culvert thing has just screwed the whole margin off of the culverts, everything. So, once those are done, they'll be in, you know, they're all ordered.
Is that something that you could get, uh, at one of the two places up in Alton?
Probably, but I get them at State Pit over DJ Creed, which is way cheaper.
Okay, but if you needed to, because you get them.
Oh, if I need one in a Hurric, yes, I could go over there, come on. As long as they have the size, I'd be absolutely there. Of course, came to shove, um, I'm sure that another town, if I needed a culvert in a Hurric, I could probably get one from another town around us and just replace it. So.
Okay.
Then almost out, once we get everything done, graded, we get caught up a little bit, then we're gonna start doing some ditching with the grader and haul them off. So, and then the other thing I gotta do is, we're gonna still do some grader shimming somehow on some of these roads, or people I talked about. You know, because come with, or I mean, where they broke a pod on the edges, that wing's gonna catch them, and somebody's gonna lose a door, a mirror, a glass, and. Nobody needs to do that, that stage of equipment. So we've got, well, some. At the office, I have figured out how much asphalt I'm gonna need. So, it's gonna be pricey, but we gotta do it somewhere, I mean, do something. At least, for the time being, until we can do something with these roads, you know?
You've begun your mowing program.
We haven't, haven't mowed. Chris is gonna stop working Fridays. Last Friday, he didn't, but he said he will mow on Fridays. And I was gonna mow today, but with this rainy, thunder showers, last thing I wanna do is stick that mower on the, it's probably not a good thing, so.
The only reason I ask, George, is I thought I saw on somebody's time card that they mowed.
You did. Um, dawn, I had him actually up here a week and a half ago.
A week, though.
A week and a half, week, week and a half ago. I did mow up here, so.
Okay.
So, I figured it'd be a replacement of a layer on it. It was fairly clean road, you can see. So we need to go pretty good with it. And I've taken the blades off, and I sharpened them, put them back on, so.
Anything else in mind?
No, um, a guy I had in mind from New York, he backed out, because his wife just took a new job, and he didn't wanna jump. And take a new job at the same time, it just looked bad.
Was there another guy to it?
Do we wanna get that posted?
It's already posted.
Okay, it is posted, alright.
And your last date?
I mean, we see the name. But it's posted.
It's posted, they were lying. Never seen that.
Oh, okay, so hopefully we get some prospects out of this, huh?
What do you think about Narrows Road, the hill on Narrows Road?
We're gonna do something to that.
You wanna just rip it off, or?
Well, I was thinking about going up there and just tearing it up, and just put reclaim on.
That's what I was thinking, dude. Yeah.
At least I can maintain it, because right now, it is just.
I know.
I've gone up there and I've put reclaiming holes, and they just pound right out.
I know, it's been bad.
So, I would like to go up there, I can give you a blessing, let's go up there, tear that asphalt up, and put the reclaim over it. Roll it in, put some calcium on it, call it. So, that's my idea. If it's okay, I'll get it down.
And what's tomorrow, a meeting, bridge meeting?
Uh, tomorrow morning at 10, yes. Um, it's the pre-construction meeting at the Hananada Bridge. Yes, and so the engineers, McValley and Johnson will be there.
What time is that?
It's at 10 a.m. at the bridge, right out at Hananada, if you wanna attend that.
Are you gonna go?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I'll, I think I'll try to carry you, though.
Yes, I'll be there, George is gonna go. Yep, Gary's.
Can you bring, bring your report back on Tuesday? So are you needing us to give you, give some sort of an answer for Narrows Road? Is that what you were asking for?
Um, I would like to get up there and get, uh, take the asphalt off of it, just put reclaim back up over that hill. Take the road or pound it.
Joe, why do you need our permission to do that?
Huh?
Why would you need our permission to do that?
Well, I just wanna basically let you know that's what I wanna do.
Because I don't think you need our permission to do that.
I'm just ripping the road, it's all.
Unless it's gonna cost, uh, uh, a higher issue than that.
What was the point you had to begin with? I mean, just for plowing reasons, maybe, or?
Why they ever did that?
Do you remember Karen, why that paint?
That was, that was done, that was done, probably 30 years ago.
I was gonna say, it was done a long time ago.
Probably be, at the time, they thought maybe it would save the hill from washout.
At one time, not recently, within the past probably 15 years, 10, 10 years, they put new pavement down on that.
Yeah, I'd have to look back and see if they.
If you're talking 15 years, that's Harold Minor.
Yeah, well, probably.
And prior to that, it was, was Bill Welch.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it wasn't done when Bill was in, because our work was prepared. So it must have been Harold.
I have a question, um, Chris Moncautke, he?
Yeah.
Um. All he puts on there is office work. We used to get some of our reports, I know I asked this before, um, I'd like to know what he's actually doing up there, because we were hoping that he would, did, um, Patty ever go and train him on the stuff that she did?
Patty never had a chance to, because Patty had been so busy at work. I know, he has called, I guess he's called her a couple of times and questioned, put questions, and she's helped him to.
Right.
Um, but I mean, he does, when he's not in the office, he'll walk through the floors, clean bathrooms, whatever.
Like, the biggest concern we have, I know for me, the biggest concern I have with Patty is that he wasn't gonna be able to keep up with what Patty was doing, and then we're gonna end up right back where we were before.
He should have worked a job.
So, she was like, collect, you know, documented every single phone call that came in, whether or not it was followed up with. She was inventory all the repairs that we've done to all the trucks. Um, any road work that we've done on the road, she was documenting. So there was a history of every single.
He was on it? He has been.
Yes, okay. Can we get an updated report on that, so we can see those reports?
I will tell them tomorrow.
Because I really would like to see that he's doing that.
I will tell them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. And as far as, you know, when he takes a phone call, he'll call me and tell me, I mean, you know, like, yesterday was one of those days where.
But those should be documented, George.
He does document.
You know, that, and that something was followed up and wrote is done. The guy told Patty was doing, we knew everything while that was going on with the highway department, she.
You know he documents stuff? Because today, he asked it, I asked him a question about a phone call we got, and he did go over to the computer. And he gave you the address, and he did everything.
I just would love to see that he's been doing it, because that was really, that was a lot of work, and I'd hate to see that go, go away.
But he's, he's actually come a long ways, he does an excellent job.
Does he produce your schedule each week?
What's that?
Does he produce your schedule each week?
I, I tell him what we're doing, and he gets it right now.
Yeah, so it's, it's, he's putting, plugging the information through the spreadsheet, so I'd still like to see it.
Yeah, and it goes to the website, the schedule, yeah.
And I know he's had a few questions of Karen, he's a foreigner, stuff, and, you know.
It just would be nice for us to see, to make sure that all that work is being, is being up.
Well, I think we can phrase it that, we just would like an updated report, just to see where we're at from the last time we got. Not that we're worried that he's doing the work. He's doing the work, we just want updates.
Thank you, Diane.
I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, George.
So I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie, and I'm hoping you'll wash out today.
Uh, the way it raised, it doesn't come down lightly, you know, or just come down all on us.
I didn't need to have the pool company come and put my water in my pool, I'll do that right now.
Probably overflowing.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Good job, thank you, George.
Find another guy, George, you're gonna need him.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. Gary, you're staying high, come down, we're all.
I'm busy.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Okay, moving on, agenda review. Anybody have anything for the agenda? No, alright. No.
Now, I did take a look at the, uh, library.
Oh, I was gonna go.
Um, it's a friggin' library over.
Painting, you mean?
It's really just a front, older section of the library, has a galvanized metal, uh, soffit, with a, uh, a square design that runs around the outside. That's all feeling, feeling off that. That's the worst part of it, though. The rest of it can be cleaned, washed, repainted. Looking at all over, I think, if I remember right, Karen, the bids were right up there. One of them was like $10,000.
13.
13, and then there was another one, um.
I think it was.
I think the, the, the lowest bid was 2,500 bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, so it's gotta be a mid-range here somewhere, but, um, I think what I'd like to do is, I'd like to have a friend of mine look at it with me, um, just to determine the galvanized section of it, and find out what, what should be done in that particular area. Um, the backside's not that bad, like I said, that can be cleaned, washed, it's not even, you know, it's not peeling or anything like that.
Okay.
But the front section's gonna.
So we can get a better bid?
I, I think, I think what we should do is, uh, see if we can find that if you, one or two, at least two more people that are willing to give us some, some rice and water.
Okay, I did know speaking with my boss, because that's what he specializes in, his coating was in industrial paint. He said, strip the galvanized, get everything off that, and then put aluminum mineral stairs on it. Because what's happening is, the galvanized is, is.
It's designed, uh, basically.
Very hard to get paint to adhere to it, so.
But that's the other problem, too, is I don't believe you're gonna get all the paint off that gallon.
I mean, I can, I can ask what they would recommend for products to get it off.
Because some of it is on, and I can see that, you know, all the places that it's peeled up and stuff can, you know, that can be sprayed and peeled off and stuff, but unless, unless we can figure out a way to get the rest off, and find some kind of bonding, you know? A bonding solution or something, and go out here with that first, then it's just gonna peel anyways.
Okay, yeah.
You know?
So you're gonna resurface.
It's kinda hard, though, it really is, a galvanized surface, and, uh, soffit is really...
It's like the old galvanized, it's really difficult.
It's the old stuff, so, so, yeah, I'm gonna check with some people, and if you can, if you...
I'll ask about term, term of it, yeah.
And I believe, the backside's not galvanized, and I think that's just the metal, just a, just a cream metal. I think the only galvanized part, I believe, is the front section, the front, front three sides.
Okay. Alright, that's good, so we're working on that, and any public, uh, Karen, you have anything for us?
Uh, no, it was just the Hananata Bridge construction meeting tomorrow, but we've already discussed that, so...
And is there any public announcement?
I have none.
So you sent us that, or I got CC'd on an email from Bennett, oh, he's asking to be on the agenda?
Yes, and so...
Does he know about it, no?
Well, um, he was asking for a meeting, he was asking for a meeting with the selectmen, and where it ended up...
Are we gonna put him on the agenda since he's asking?
Well...
That's all I wanna know.
We need a deciding vote, so where it ended up, two of the select board members thought you should meet, two did not, Ed would have been the deciding factor, but one of the board members wanted to know what everyone else was thinking before they made a final decision, so that's where we're at, um, I believe maybe the police chief was going to address that, um...
In non-public?
Yes, he was going to be here at six, and if you don't mind, I'll just go and check where...
Do we have any other business before, um, we go into non-public?
I don't...
Oh, that's right, public input. Um, yeah, can we go into, uh, to, public input? So I'll see if we go into, uh, public in... Not public. Public input, uh, no, we're gonna go into public.
Open public input.
How we public input? Uh, at six twelve?
Six twelve.
And is there anybody that has any questions, uh, on the computer? Is anyone listening? Three people, and none of those three people have any comments or concerns?
He's not here.
He's not here, let me go and, if you don't mind, excuse me for a minute, I'll just go and call him and...
Any of you people have any public input?
I would just like to say that because that letter was sent, um, and the chair was CC'd on it, it basically is public document. Mr. Bennett?
Public document.
It's a public document, the email. So that's why it can be discussed in our public, or it's chief chooses, or it can be discussed, but bottom line is, it's a public document, I mean, email, email it.
Is there any, I mean, there's really nothing new, right, right? He just wants to reiterate what was dropped, for what's already?
It says that he just, he wants to be heard, he, he wants to be heard, most of us... He, he feels that he's in danger, and he wants to be heard.
There's nothing we can do, we can't tell the police chief what to do, so it doesn't matter what we hear, let me know, police chief has told us what action he took, and how he backed himself up with the sheriff's department, and to legal matters, I, there's nothing we can do. Whether we hear him or not, we can't tell the police chief to go do it.
Hold it in, we can put it right now, hold on. Is there any public input out there? Are you sure? Alright, I'm gonna close, public input at six fourteen.
I mean, it'd be hard if I...
Well, I had a couple of people watch when Anna was telling, uh, people how to use the chat box, and a couple of people tried to use it, and they could not, it just would disappear, so they're still refused, and Patty uses the chat box. So, if she's out there, I, I'm saying, please use it, try again. I think I used it, I don't know if she would, I'm trying to remember. So, I don't know. What else is there? So the, finally, it went well on Saturday, we had fifteen families participate.
Oh, very nice.
Yeah, it was really nice, and all the families have asked to come back next year, please do it again.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And the, the police department barbecue went very, very well.
Yeah, that was, well, thank you guys for...
People, hell, man. For a couple of things, it's a good house.
Oh, it was very good, it was real good. Wait, all the extra desserts are... Give away, give away. I didn't say any, no, I'm wearing a shop.
And you're six thirty, it's here, I was about to move the weight to one.
Alright, what is this about, um, chief, so we can fill the right numbers going, is this in non-public?
Yes, it is.
And what is it about?
Personnel.
Huh?
Personnel.
Personnel? So first, the hiring, uh, let's see, personnel would be... Is this about disciplining first?
No, hiring.
Hiring, so that would be, um, A three, two B. So I need an option, make a motion, we go into non-public, and I say nine one dash eight, call him. For you, I'm in a world two, B? B, B for hire.
Second.
Uh, who's second?
I did.
Um, Karen, B. All those favorites, Diane?
Yes.
Gary? Uh, Rick?
Yeah.
Ed?
Aye.
Lori? Yes. Alright, chief? And we are into come?